I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join us as we salute the Stars and Stripes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for River Ridge. Applicants are seeking an extension of site plan approval to complete construction for the townhouses that are located there. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Rothschild, come on up. We have been opening and continuing this because our last continuance or extension resolution noted that the applicants needed to provide a vellum documenting the location of the easement.
Correct.
All we had was a really small map that's on the whole, covers the whole town. They provided something smaller. There was a question as to the width. Both Mr. Stein, the project sponsor, and Mr. Rothschild weighed in to say that when you signed the agreement with Winnicke, they did not want meets and bounds, just a general description with a 10-foot width. That's been provided. All we were missing is the vellum, and Mr. Rothschild told me tonight they don't quite have the vellum, but it should be here tomorrow.
Exactly.
Anything you want to add to that?
Nothing.
We had notes added to, we did a preliminary review of the submission, and they added notes stating that it was 10 feet wide.
So we're where we are, except we don't have the physical vellum to attach to the over, as an overlay to our set of plans. But I believe we have a resolution prepared that has now been changed.
We have a resolution prepared to grant the extension contingent on the vellum being received.
Any comments from the board? Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, any comments from consultants, sorry, additional? Make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Diane, you have this?
I have this. Resolution to extend site plan approval for River Ridge at Hyde Park. Resolution 57-02Q, whereas seven times. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a two-year extension of the time to complete construction of the project as shown on the site plan approved by resolution number 52-02K. Two and including September 25th, 2021, subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, submission to the town of a vellum overlay map showing the approximate location of the 10-foot wide trail easement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries six to one. We have one absent. Thank you. Good to see you.
Excellent. Good to see you.
We'll look for the vellum tomorrow.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a continuing public hearing for Dollar General. This is a proposal for a new store to be located at 1 East Dorsey Lane, which is at the intersection of Dorsey and Violet Avenue or Route 9G. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So since our last meeting, we had one issue relating to Seeker. And that we had a sign off basically from the New York State Department of Transportation, as well as the District County Department of Public Works. Both of them had specific comments requesting some more information. Neither one posed any more questions about the traffic impact analysis or the supplemental information that was provided. Our own traffic consultants from CPL have also reviewed the traffic impact analysis and largely gave the summary that the traffic impacts were not such that they would cause physical improvements to the roads, nor was nor information needed. So what was left after that was basically questions about the stormwater and drainage. If we'll recall, the area that's proposed for the stormwater detention basin in this area at some point over the years had filled because it's not the original soil. They found materials in it that indicated that it had been disturbed. However, we have a letter from Mr. Sotero and email from the DEC noting that while they have not addressed the issue fully themselves, they are willing to allow the town, since it's an MS4 community, we had a matter on stormwater, that if our engineer, who's part of our stormwater management system, would weigh in and say this is going to operate almost the same way as native soils would, then they were okay with it. Is that a good way to summarize that?
That was excellent.
Thank you. And so we received Mr. Sotero's letter. And I do agree, I have to say myself, that as Pete noticed, he's been there, working there since 1988, and there's been no disturbance. So that's a long time for Phil not to go ahead and settle fully. So I think we're okay moving forward on Seeker, and that's what we're prepared to do tonight. That noted, let me turn it over to you, Ms. Majanowski, and you can take it away from me.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Karen Majanowski from Bowler Engineering here with Ken Fioretti from HSC Hyde Park LLC this evening. The contract purchaser and developer for the project. Mr. Chairman, did a great job summarizing the progress we've made with review agencies since the last meeting about a month or so ago. We see no issues being able to address DCDPW comments and DOT comments in regards to access. We are working on plan revisions. And we have not submitted this formally yet because it's all still in the works. But DOT provided further guidance on sharpening the angle of the right-in only off of Violet Avenue, which we've depicted here, to discourage cars traveling south on Violet Avenue from turning left into the site, which is a right-in only access. We've also smoothed the radius of the sidewalk around the guywire on East Dorsey Lane. So we're continuing to work through the final comments for both access points for the county DPW and for DOT for the Violet Avenue access. We saw the comments from CPL, and I don't see anything earth-shattering. I think we can address all of it. And we're confirming with Dollar General the delivery hours.
Thank you.
To address that as well.
Some of the comments are relatively picky, including landscaping. But when I noticed where we were looking for shade trees, that you had a hornbeam that wouldn't provide shade, that it's shaped differently, we made those suggestions. Also, Bedlea, as I said, our butterfly bush commonly is, I think, going to be reclassified as invasive. Where you were proposing them, if you want to keep them, it's probably okay because you're going to be mowing the rest, but they can land in other people's yards, et cetera. So we just put in knockout rises because they're very low maintenance. They're probably cheaper than the butterfly bush, too, to be honest with you. But all of our, all the comments that I provided to you have been incorporated into Liz's memo. Which then brings me over to Liz. Comments?
Well, I won't duplicate, so I can see that the access configuration is tightened up for the right-in. There was a discussion about the path of the sidewalk as it goes along East Dorsey to kind of round that off instead of making a square path around the utility pool. And then the plane tree on the north, there was a concern about site distance. So I'm, we're suggesting notation indicating that lower limbs shall be removed from the tree as determined to be necessary to provide clear site distance for the driveway to the north. Michael already touched on the landscaping, except to add a tree to the landscape island, the one that you just created. And other than that, yeah, cleaning up, adding the black wire mesh and the post and rail fence around the basin. Those are the biggies.
Thank you. Ms. Chair, comments?
You pretty much had covered it in regards to the last issue as far as the DEC classification. As I said in my letter, memo, there's still some technical issues that we'll work through. But have you guys completed, I know you're going to do some additional soil testing for the other, I guess I'll call it the primary underground piping, you know, system that's more out towards Dorsey Lane?
We have not yet. We wanted to see where the fill situation.
Right, okay. All right, that makes sense. That makes sense. So, so I think that, you know, we're getting there, and that's about it for now.
Thank you. Before I go on to Ms. Palladaro, one, after our last meeting, the neighbors just to the east had asked about whether there'd be any regrading in this area. And, because they referred to a mound, so I was over there at 7:00 the next morning, walking around. And this area in through here is fairly wooded. And I think they were, I remember them asking, is this all going to be cleared? So from what I can tell from the plans, this, all the trees that are located in this area, and there's nothing of great interest, but that's all going to be removed. And there's a little bit of regrading, if I'm correct, right in through here? Is that right?
If we have to do the infiltration piping, then we will disturb that. Otherwise, we wouldn't touch that area.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So this, like, anything in through here would stay as-is?
You may need to, you may, you may need to clear that when you do your site distance measurements for the Department of Public Works. My guess is you probably have to clear some of that.
Yeah, we would clean it up.
The truth of it is, is when I was over there, I thought, oh, they're being, they can't take a ride out not because of any tree that might be proposed there, it's because you can't really see anything. Because it's all so dense and through here with just stuff. There are trees, and there's a lot of underground shrubbery and vines that are invasives that have made it kind of, you know, Sleeping Beauty looking like, where you can't see through it at all. So I just wanted to clarify that for them. Thank you. Ms. Palladaro, any other comments?
My comments have all been incorporated into Liz's memo. Just to remind you that the applicant is seeking a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they can't move forward until this board completes the seeker process.
Which we should be doing tonight. That reminds me, I have not had the time to take a look at the section of law that involves the ZBA referring applications over to the planning board. We haven't had a referral on this for recommendation about the variance. Is there something that triggers this that I'm not following? Because it seems to be sporadic. Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I have to look.
No.
But you can, you can voluntarily send them a recommendation, so there's no need for a referral.
Would, would the board like to entertain a motion allowing me to send a positive recommendation for the increase in scale that they're seeking?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll just entertain just that. Because I believe that maybe, since we're doing seeker tonight, it's possible that they could entertain granting the variance at their next meeting, which is in a week. So I wanted to go ahead and move this forward just in case they discover that there is a reason or that they did not somehow follow through procedurally to refer this to us. As I said, we sometimes get referrals and sometimes don't. And I don't, I haven't quite paid attention to what the situations are when we do or don't. And they're free to ignore, but it does specify it someplace in the law. I'll find it. So thanks, colleagues. Anything else, Victoria?
Nope.
Let me start to the right. Any comments, Ms. DeNapoli?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Ms. Wuster?
No, but I, we had a few comments about the Shepherd's Gliding, that the base should be black. We, I don't remember if that got transmitted, so I don't want to be repeating things.
It's in-
Was it in there?
It's in the memo.
Okay. Very good. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Glad to see you moving forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Weiser?
I have no comments.
So mine I conveyed to you already in a separate email. I just wanted to reiterate, one, is that we don't have the details of the luminaires, I don't think, and the light poles specifically. Liz said she provided detail. But it looks as though what you're proposing, I think, matches the lights above the signs on the building, this what we call the Shepherd's Crook. Is that correct?
I'll double check that there on the lighting plan.
It's, there's a little inset, but it's so blurry, I couldn't really see what it was. And there's no lighting pole, so it's just a little square detail. Otherwise, all my comments were located in that memo.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, I think that Chris, we all had a chance to read parts two and three of the environmental assessment form that were sent out by Ms. Axelson two days ago.
Yes.
And we have a resolution prepared, so first-
I'm going to read through the part two.
You can read through part two. Can we specify that it's been read for the record?
You can.
Let's note that it's been read for the record, since all seven of us have affirmed that we've already read it. So it's just a resolution.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
Resolution adopting a secret determination of significant, of significance negative declaration. Dollar General, resolution number 2019-04A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries six to one with one absent. And before we go on, I just want to compliment publicly, Ms. Majanowski. I commented to both she and her client earlier that having, most of us sat up here for many years, we're aware that sometimes consultants can kind of let things slip away, and that you often need to really push. And congratulations for pushing that hard with the DEC, because there for a while I wasn't sure we were going to come to a resolution. Mainly because this is obviously something they need to address, but I know it takes a while for governments to move, to come to an opinion, and feel free to say, yes, you can use 50-year-old Phil as normal. So thanks to the cooperation of Mr. Sotero and your perseverance. I'm glad to say we've moved forward on this. So there being no other comments, and you going before the board, the ZBA, and I having the authorization, now to send a positive letter. I think we should adjourn this to our first meeting in October. Does that sound right?
November.
Ah, November, sorry. November the 6th? Make it a motion to adjourn to November 6th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Good luck, the ZBA.
The next item on the agenda is Nichols Oxygen Property. We have a request to amend the site plan approval and special use permit approval resolution to account for a 2% increase correction. This is a very simple issue. There were some questions over calculation of scale. The plans themselves have not changed whatsoever. When we did the original resolution authorizing the special use permits for the increase, it was listed as 145%. Our original resolution said, please change it to 45%, not 145. And then once Ms. Axelson and Mr. Tyrums came to an agreement, it turns out that it's a 47% increase. But it's still the same plans we approved, it's just a difference in, we'll call it mathematics. Is that a good way to describe it, Liz?
Sounds good.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution amending conditional site plan and special use permit approval. Nichols Oxygen Property, October 2nd, 2019, resolution 2019-07B. Whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas, 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 whereas. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the board reaffirms its original findings pursuant to section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. One, the project will comply with the applicable requirements of Articles 4 and 5 of the zoning law, and will be consistent with the principles of a neighborhood business district. The proposal utilizes spaces within and without the existing buildings that have been in commercial use and are screened by existing trees and natural features. Two, the project will be consistent with the purposes of the zoning law. The purposed increase in scale is permitted by the zoning law and expands the uses at the site without significantly expanding the site's footprint or impact on the neighboring properties. The project will not result, three, the project will not result in excessive off-premises noise, dust, odors, solid waste or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. The proposed used car use does not generate significant noise, dust, or glare. Four, the project will not cause a significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overloaded existing roads. Five, the project will be suitable for the proposed action considering the property's size, location, topography, vegetation, soils, natural habitat, and its ability to be screened from the neighboring properties and public roads. The project does not include any new structures and only minor increases in impervious services. Six, the project has been designed to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to protect the natural, historic, and scenic resources of the town. The property is not bordered by any natural, historic, or scenic resources. Neighboring uses are commercial, and the project is not inconsistent with the neighboring uses. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby amends the resolution 2019-07A and reapproves the site plan and grants a special use permit for the project as shown on the site plan, and authorizes the chairperson or his authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the scale calculation to identify the increase as 47% instead of 145% and amend the note to state. The increase in scale from existing to proposed is 47% and delete everything thereafter. Two, revision of the site plan to show the existing Y-shaped entrance/exit consolidated into one curb cut as a single two-way driveway as approved by the New York State Department of Transportation. The pavement shall be removed from the closed driveway, ground scarified, soil added, area seeded with lawn mix and mulched to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator and town engineer. Any revisions to the internal circulation plan necessitated by the consolidation shall be approved by the zoning administrator and town engineer. Four, revision of the site plan to add a notation prohibiting fluids leaking or spilling from vehicles and requiring all vehicle repair to be performed inside of the garage building. Five, revision of the site plan to add a note prohibiting the outside storage of parts or materials. Six, revision of the site plan to add a note prohibiting the outdoor storage of unregistered vehicles that are not capable of passing inspection. Seven, revision of the site plan to move the pointer to buildings A1- A3 to point only to building A1, and revise the label pointing to only building A1 to read, in quotes, "existing two-story building," in quotes, with no reference to any dimension or square footage. Be it further resolved, the planning board recommends that that zoning administrator issue a sign permit for the sign.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries six to one as well. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for Susan Kenny. Is Ms. Kenny? Thank you.
Good night.
Come on up. We wouldn't normally do this, but I just wanted to point out that the place is looking great.
Thank you very much.
You've really modernized it. It looks like sort of 60s, mid-century modern with the materials you've chosen. Looks really good. I just want to compliment you. You didn't realize, probably didn't realize that you needed a site plan waiver for a new building permit.
No, we didn't. Sorry. We didn't know we lived on the left side, and that was the side that we were supposed to get permission.
So we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator for the site plan waiver, but I want to point out that this is, what gives rise to the scenic area statewide significance that you're in, which is an overlay district, is because you have the Roosevelt properties, the Venable properties, and the river. And the planning board is supposed to take particular scrutiny of anything that's visible from those three sites. We didn't write language that, the state supplied general language for it. It says basically anything between the two that's to the right of, or west of Route 9. We've been working on trying to create a better historic overlay district. We're waiting on county planning, but in the meantime, people like you, you're not visible from anything. You're caught. So I apologize. That's why we do the waiver process. But I have to admit, Cynthia knows, I was driving, and I was, and I went, "They're building something that hasn't been through us yet." But it looks really good. If no one's had a chance to see it, it's a huge improvement for the property. I mean, real big improvement for the property. Also, just so you know, I believe Mr. Westermeyer has explained to at least me, and I think I've said it before, you, I believe, had a wood, sort of cladding wood exterior, and you're putting some brick up. So it's when you put the brick up on the outside that requires a building permit because it changes the weight-bearing load of the wall. Even if it's a brick veneer, he wants to look at it or something like that.
Yeah, it's a veneer. It's like, you can do a pile, like, side.
If you're, if you go from like brick veneer to stone veneer, it doesn't, because it's already load-bearing, but he has to evaluate something special being done. I don't know what it is. So at any rate, I'm glad you came in tonight. You didn't have to, but thank you. Are you new to Hyde Park?
Yes.
Welcome.
Well, thank you.
I enjoyed this whole process.
Oh, you did?
You should come. It's really fun.
This is so interesting.
We appreciate-
We do this twice a month, so feel free.
It's really fun.
And you're on tele, you're on local access, channel 22, while you're here right now. You can wave to all your new neighbors, et cetera. But we also, we generally say this, and we mean it, we appreciate people investing inside the community the way you're doing to make a big improvement that way. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Susan Kenny, 2 Rogers Place, 6064-08-927906. Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, October 2nd, 2019, resolution number 2019-43. Whereas a site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Susan Kenny for home remodel to include new windows, roof siding, AC, new garage side entry, new garage side entry, and a paraplan entry with addition of porch roof to the existing single-family home. Whereas, 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 whereas. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for proposed changes as described in the building permit application dated August 30th, 2019, and the request for a waiver of site plan received by the Planning Department on 20, September 20th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, a big welcome. Looks great. I can't wait to see what you're going to do with the landscaping, et cetera. It looks really nice. Glad to have you in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just one question. So you said now with the stone, who do I need to have look at it?
Oh, don't worry. You'll need to, have you applied to pull a building permit?
No, I prob, I'm off tomorrow, so I knew I was probably after a few guys.
That's the next thing.
So gracious to say yes. Then I would go see him tomorrow and get everything that I need.
So the way this works is, if you apply for a building permit first, and you went down, it's referred upstairs to our zoning administrator. She then checks to see which district it's in, because sometimes single-family residential doesn't require anything from us. It's just that you happen to be in this SAS, we call it, the statewide area of scenic, scenic, scenic area, statewide significance, sorry. And there are others around town, so normally you wouldn't require review from us. So, but if you're changing windows and doors, which I think you're changing some windows, that requires a building permit as well.
Okay.
So since you're already through us, when you apply, it will be sent up to TAD. TAD will go, bing, already waived review, and then he can issue the building permit. You can keep, keep going.
Okay, great.
They have one building permit for some of the work, and there's one in the process right now.
Oh, right. I believe you applied for a building permit for some interior work.
Correct.
They had some stuff already approved for electrical, AC.
Which is why interior, interior work doesn't come to us.
Except the torches are being moved by Donald.
Okay. Okay. So did they already have an application for the building permit for the exterior?
For part of it, yes. Rick, Rich has been out there.
Okay. Good luck. Thank you. Same here, same here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is Renaissance Rehabilitation Nursing Care Center. If you recall, we rejected an earlier proposal for a freestanding sign. The applicants, and she's here tonight representing, welcome back.
Thank you.
They revised the, the plan to have a white background in the interior, which comports with the beige and white background of the building. Ms. Moss reviewed it. She believes now it's code compliant.
Mind if I pass out?
Pass away. Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have enough, we can share.
Yeah, we can. Okay. Do you want to walk us through the changes? They're pretty simple.
Pretty much just buying a vinyl cover and covering, like, changing the sign itself. The posts are going to stay the same as they are now. They're very-
And it's a dark, and it's a darker purple around.
Yeah, so the light-colored purple is the post. Those are as they are now. If you want to drive by, you're welcome to see them. And then the sign background will be white, and the letters will be the lighter purple to match the posts. And then there's going to be a dark purple border, and a yellow.
Comments from my left, Ms. Weiser?
No, thank you for making the changes.
Mr. Pickett?
Thank you. It looks nice. I think people would be able to see it a lot easier, too.
Ms. Wuster?
Same comment.
Mr. Oliver?
Same comment. Thank you.
Ms. DeNapoli?
Just a few. Thank you for making the changes. There's a huge improvement to it. My concern is still with the posts. Because they're such a, because they play off of the white so well, they have a habit of drawing your eye when you're driving by. And I was wondering, just for some thoughts, if you would consider doing the posts in the darker purple, and that would pull the sign altogether. And you could just leave the caps maybe in the lighter purple.
I can get an estimate on that. Honestly, and this isn't your fault, but we've spent a lot of money on this side, and we're going to spend a lot more money on it to fix it. So just the less I can fix, the better. But I can definitely, if it's needed, I'll do it, but it's-
Because when you're going by fast, you know, the white's fine. But it's that brighter purple that will, at least for me, when I go by and I go by practically every single day, I find that's what's pulling my eye, which could make it unsafe as you're driving by because you're turning to look.
Okay.
Before you get an estimate, how does the rest of the board feel? Oh, I'm sorry. You're not talking to the microphone. You're not talking to the microphone. I apologize. Ann Dexter's not here. She would remind me. The gentleman who's taping it came up.
Even closer.
Closer?
Sorry.
You can move the mic closer.
So, does it, before she does the investigation, does the rest of the board feel passionately about this, or?
I don't feel passionately about the color change. Sorry, Ms. Denapoli.
I'm okay with how it's pictured.
You can vote against, to show record of protest. So, who has this resolution? I have this resolution. Resolution recommendation for issuance or denial of sign permit pursuant to town code Section 108-24.3A4D. Renaissance Rehabilitation Nursing Care Center, 4975 Elme Post Road, freestanding sign, parcel 606602856792, October 2nd, 2019, Resolution 2019-44. Whereas, 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 let's read one. Whereas, the design unit has been changed to downplay the purple by reversing the background to white and creating purple letters. Now be further resolved that the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for Renaissance Rehabilitation and Nursing Care Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Me.
The motion carries five, five-one-one, with one absent, and you're free to go ahead and erect the sign as now proposed.
Okay, awesome. We'll do that right away. Thank you.
Oh, second.
You're welcome.
Do you have a second on that?
I think I heard, I think I heard Ann second.
Don't part here without Ann Dexter.
Hey, it was Chris Oliver. Thank you.
There we go.
Chris, there you go. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you.
And continued success over there.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, last item on the agenda, is a referral for local law, I of 2019. I sent out a response earlier. It's based on what we discussed briefly at the last meeting. The whole idea of still photography, it seems clear, if you read the letter, which you all did, I know, that they're trying to regulate big commercial uses, like movies, or even elaborate weddings, or something that's just sort of elaborate, where, again, where like props and sets and lighting's going to be used. Because you don't want to...
What is disruption?
Disruption. That's, it stayed in the intent. But you don't want to stop, say, Billy and Joe and their mom from taking some wedding shots or engagement shots at a wedding party, in front of the river, at a park. I don't think.
Which would be commercial.
Which would, could be still commercial, but it's a low-key, small thing. So, I suggested some additions of language that would include things such as props, et cetera. I also suggested they add, making sure that they provide liability insurance up to a certain amount, because this law only permits them to start the process. It doesn't include the actual application or anything else. So I think that they should always have insurance, obviously, for this, in case there's a ruining of town roads. But Ann made a suggestion that on part, the issue, bullet point two, where it now reads, "We agree that all still photography projects should require permit if there are props, sets, and models involved." Her suggestion would be, and it said that we agree that film, video, and still photography projects should require permit when there are props, sets, or models involved, rather than all.
Yeah, I just wanted to add film and video to still photography.
I think that's better.
So that whenever, so it's not still photography.
It's more disruptive anyway.
Right.
And Chris's suggestion, we add size of the crew, so...
Add like, more than fives.
I think that they're looking to have more than maybe two people as crew.
I mean, even a wedding could have three or four.
I, what are we, so...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Plan, just before we go on, Mr. Planzki suggested, in a very brief email, almost inscrutable, that we continue this to our next meeting to give me more opportunity to rework it. So, we don't have to send it tonight. They're not in a rush, is what I'm trying to say. Yes? Before I get to Steph's question.
I did see his email. I think he was suggesting the town board.
It said public hearing, but he said continue to 1016, which, that's our meeting, isn't it? Is 1016?
He's in Europe, traveling.
Oh, he is, okay.
So he may not be.
That's why I said it was cross-wires, I see.
Your email had 1016 in it, because you were telling the board to respond.
Right, okay.
Or table to our.
So first, Stephanie questions.
Well, I actually goes back further, which is, if you know the genesis as to why this law was requested to be developed, was some, did something happen of a large scale or a small scale?
Anybody know?
Well, I mean, HBO's been filming movies throughout, a lot of movies are being filmed throughout the Hudson Valley.
Yeah.
With some...
Which is a good thing.
in Poughkeepsie. So I assume, I assume that's the genesis, but...
I mean, there was that movie on the Hudson, something on the Hudson. But I was just wondering if something specific had happened, and I would be careful not to make it too restrictive.
HBO did do some of its filming for, I think it's She's Come Undone, the Mark Ruffalo helmed.
This much I know is true.
It's This Much I Know Is True, sorry, wrong novel. He, they filmed at Hyde for a day or two, and there was, I mean, Pete, you were over there, you work right by there. Did you see any disruption?
Uh, disruption, other than, other than when, you know, you drive by, you're like, wow.
Rubbernecking. I did the same thing.
But, I mean, as far as...
At any rate...
No, I don't know about, you know, the neighbors, but...
Well, I think it's a good thing for the area, and I'd be careful not to make it too restrictive.
Oh, it's not restrictive.
I think...
I want to make sure it's not a burden.
No, I'm referring to Chris's comment about five people versus two people. I mean, I don't think we need to be so restrictive on that kind of an issue, in other words.
So, Chris was suggesting that we also add language that if there's less than five people working on a shot, that that could also be exempt? Does that sound...
That was just an idea. I don't have an actual number, but, I mean...
I know, the thing is, is that our laws are, you, what's the thing with clothing, one size fits all? Well, that's never really true. It's one size fits most.
I was just thinking, I think the goal is to restrict that more commercial.
Yeah, not to restrict, but make to make sure they...
But you can also have, you can also have, like, a very, say, a very expensive wedding, where, like, someone wants to, like, I want to shoot the entire, I'm going to put a camera on the back of a car, I'm going to shoot the entire wedding party going through town. It's not commercial. So I think you want to make sure, you know, just kind of protect us from some, like, some extravagant wedding fiasco.
That's why I added the crew size, because, you know, if there's something huge, you're going to have more people.
And these are just, our recommendations are suggestions only. The board can disagree with this, so...
Is this something, let's say they need to get permission. Who do they go to, then?
The zoning administrator.
Is there a way, then, we can get, she could grant a waiver?
There's no site plan or...
There's no site plan or anything. They get a permit or they don't. And what we're trying to say is, is they were recommending that there is no permit required for non-commercial, basically.
Or, or have a more...
And here's the, and here's the iffy area. And here's the iffy area. When I say non-commercial, I say private or personal. That's the better way to put it. Because if you hire ten people to do various shots and filming for your wedding, you're paying them. So, someone's making money off it, therefore it's somewhat commercial, but it's for private use. That's part of what I think we're doing here, too.
I mean, political candidates filming videos or shoots in town, do they need a permit?
That's what I'm saying. I find this to be rather...
You're going down the web.
Open-ended.
Well, that's the thing is, is that, this is...
Restricting too much.
This is, these are just suggestions for them to consider. So I will add in that they would consider no permit for private filming, videoing, or photography, where the size of the crew is five or less.
Any other towns have, or cities have this?
I, this is something that, again, this sort of got sprung on us, and as I said at the very beginning, I don't believe they needed to refer it to us at all, because we're not involved.
It seemed like it hadn't been thought out.
I think they just...
Thought out.
As well, as we would like.
You could give them that wording, of five or less, and let them...
And let them, again, that's why I end it with, we suggest you rely on your own set of facts for making the decision, because these are suggestions only. So, I will, I think what I'll do is...
Maybe no overarching sentence, just that we understand what you're trying to do, but we don't want to be too restrictive.
A little more clarification.
Or more clarification.
It seems like you're working on a disruption, so what, you could designate it per county roads, county streets. I mean, that's where you're...
The county, the county would need to give its own permits for that. This is strictly on, well, this is private property, too. I shouldn't say that, but it's public property owned by the town, as well as private property if it's triggered. So, say for filming the HBO at Hyde, that would be triggered. I should also, I didn't add in through here, but who's going to find out about this law?
Who's going to know?
The, I mean, fine, yeah.
It needs to be referred to Duchess County Tourism, because they're the ones who help arrange all film shoots, just so we all know, are clear.
I think location scouts know they have to go through, I think location scouts know they have to go through town permitting. I mean, that's their jobs. So they're used to this.
They did come in.
Yeah.
From HBO, they came in, and I think they also notified the police.
They did notify the police.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So we'll have some, so, do you want to wait, and I'll rewrite this, and then we'll consider at the next meeting to send it over to the town board?
It's up to you. The board can authorize you to amend it per the discussion tonight, or you can...
Would you like to authorize me?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll send this around, make sure everybody's okay with it.
Thank you for doing it.
Well, this is, it's, again, this was like trying to grab a Vaseline football, like, squeezing out of my hands, because I'm, particularly when Victoria, but she's the one who brought up and said, "What about the influencers?" I was like, "Oh, yeah. They take pictures of themselves all day long, and that's used to make money."
I, yeah.
We make real money.
I don't think that's the intent.
That's not the intent. That's what I was saying, so...
It's Kim Kardashian.
It's a good comment. A comment from somebody who might be following those influencers, unlike me, who doesn't follow anybody. So, thank you. I'll revise and send out, and now make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are we dead? Like, it's not live anymore? Okay.